All right, I will call to order the City of Milton Common Council meeting this Tuesday, September sixteenth at six P M. Can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Milton Piggly Wiggly, and Hometown Ace Hardware.
Thank you. Approval of agenda? Motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And who opposed? Motion carries. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action?
We do not have any of the public signed in.
Okay. Chief, if you'd like to take this opportunity, please?
I'll just echo my longstanding comment. I respect the courtesy, but I'm not duty officer tonight, so I'm excited. Um, it has continued to be relatively busy. Um, I will take some time. We've had some very, very serious incidents on the last month or so. Um, so in the event that there's any questions that we can't answer, there's a couple of them that are still under investigation. So I'll take a couple of minutes with those in a minute. City of Milton itself, sixty-two nine-one-one calls for the month of August, um, puts you at about thirty-three percent of the total activity within the district. And based on population, that's probably about right. I mean, I don't see anything out of perspective there. You are certainly growing. We've got a lot of things going on. It's very, very positive, but we're also seeing the trend and the increase in activity to go along with it. Um, inspection, um, information, we just don't have everything updated yet, but we're good there. Staffing, we're staying at full staffing and we're in good shape. Did I talk about Jeremy Parker at all last month or not? Like, with eleven meetings, I forget which ones I commented on. So a lot of you know Jeremy, and that's the only reason I'm bringing this up. There's nothing bad about this. Um, Jeremy, for those who don't know, he came to us in the integration of the two departments. He was the acting chief over here in Milton for a couple of years. Super, super guy, and we are so excited that we were able to to keep him on. He and his wife actually, they have a gorgeous home up north, and I think they came to the conclusion, we don't need two nice houses, especially because the plan eventually is to is to move up north when he retires. Um, he didn't want to leave the department. We didn't want to lose him. But if you're a chief officer of the department, you have to live in the district. So what what he did is he took one of our open shift positions, because we've been adding some personnel, um, over in the west, um, on shift. So he is taking a captain's position with us, still in a pseudo-leadership role, um, but it allows him, you know, to be home four days and then work two. So that's the change related to Jeremy. We are extremely glad that we didn't lose his expertise and and abilities. And he's extremely glad because he, they're enjoying, you know, the home up north now. So because of that, we had an opening for the division chief of prevention and inspection, who oversees all of the pub ed stuff and all the inspections and plan reviews, of which certainly Mark's aware. There's a lot going on in Milton right now. Um, we were, it's almost like a gift that kind of falls out of the sky in your lap. Um, there's a gentleman by the name of Scott Fisher, who retired as a captain with the Beloit Fire Department, tremendous experience. Um, Scott actually went up to Alaska, so if you want to talk to somebody about firefighting and kind of a unique environment, you know, pick his brain. He went up to Alaska. He was a fire chief in Alaska for several years and kind of decided maybe it was time to come back where it stayed warmer a little bit longer. Scott is a former intern of mine from about thirty-five years ago, and we were aware that he was available. He has extensive inspection experience, extensive, he's a paramedic, and, um, extensive, um, investigation experience. So I reached out to him and said, be interested? And so Scott Fisher is the new division chief of prevention and inspection for Lakeside. So a little bit of how that got there. Um, if you flip the page, on the backside, finances, we're still, um, doing well, and we're happy about that. Uh, the additional support, again, primarily in the west, um, has helped us resolve a lot of those issues. Um, if you've been following that number in the yellow over the last year, that was well over a million dollars, uh, earlier this year. So you can see that we're getting that down, which is a very, very positive thing for all of us. Um, so then I'll get to the emergency events. I'm going to start with a couple that we're just unbelievably proud of. Um, we had a pulseless non-breather at the K O A campground in the town of Fulton, right on the Fulton Milton border. Um, full cardiac arrest when the call came into nine-one-one, and the system did what the system is designed to do. Dispatchers started providing CPR instructions. Bystanders on the scene were able to start CPR. First arriving law enforcement officer was able to deploy an A E D. Our paramedics arrived. Literally, the gentleman was talking to us before we got him to Mercy. And so just the entire system, from the dispatchers to the law enforcement, um, to our personnel, it worked extremely well, and we're just very, very proud of that. Um, a lot of you are aware of the water-related incidents. We've had two of them on Lake Koshkana, um, and both of them are still under investigation, so not that a lot that can be said, other than, um, and I may have commented on this one last month. In forty-some-odd years of doing this, I have never pulled up on the scene and had two tourniquets applied to the same individual. It was an extremely serious situation. Um, crews did a phenomenal job in the field. We got him to Mercy. That individual is alive and, um, you know, so we're just really proud of the crews in terms of what they did there. Same is true. There were some bystanders that also helped out in that situation. Then we get to the next four. You'll notice that every one of them lists slash, um, with fatality. Um, we've had four in the last month, uh, incidents involving, uh, loss of life, and then there was one right at the end of, um, July as well, so five in about the last six weeks. Um, we are doing a lot with our crews to make sure that, you know, when you have a younger staff and they get exposed to just how cruel life can be sometimes, um, so we've got our peer support teams involved. We've got Mercy's critical stress debriefing teams involved to help them through it, as well as working with the families and everybody that was involved in the incidents themselves. Um, the house fire on Newville Road, um, we did bring in D C I to help us with that investigation. Both D C I and Lakeside investigators, it it looks like lightning. It it and and different kinds of fires have patterns that you can pretty much tell, or at least you can assume this is a pattern related to X, Y, or Z. Both of us came to the conclusion that this had the the aspects of lightning involved in it. Um, we went to the National Weather Service. They've got some real advanced databases available. Um, they did confirm last week that there was a lightning strike on that property. I can't tell you exactly where, right, but but on that property, about thirty-five minutes before the call came in, which came in from a passerby. Um, my public P S A, public safety announcement for everybody, there were no smoke detectors in the home. And and so it it is just, it is so tragic. Um, so if you don't have, and and we make, we make this announcement to anybody, our crews carry smoke detectors. If you don't have one and you want one installed, we will bring it out and we will install it. Um, so just, that covers that one. Um, the interstate crash one, um, lot of, um, discussion, critical stress-related issues. That was an eight-month-old child. Um, so the P S A announcement related to that one is when they tell you to tighten up the straps on your kids, even though your kids are telling you they don't want them that tight, um, it makes a difference. And unfortunately, in this case, it appears, um, with what happened at a very high speed, um, uh, it did not hold the child in the safety seat, so. The U T V, uh, the U T V crash, very much under investigation, but the question that's come up from a lot of our municipalities related to that that I can speak to, the U T V was not on the roadway. It had never been on the roadway. It didn't get there by the roadway. Um, it was a private property issue from the beginning, um, to the tragic end. So, you know, as all of you have began to to open up roads to U T Vs and the questions that sometimes come up about that, we just wanted to spell any rumors that that it had nothing to do with a U T V on the road, um, exclusively a private property issue. And then, uh, the motorcycle crash, uh, over the weekend down in the town of Johnstown, um, just another one of those tragic events that we've been dealing with. Um, we believe the crash actually happened sometime overnight. Um, the call came in at about six-thirty A M. in the morning, uh, which is when the sun is coming up, and we believe that that's when the individual was found. But we don't think the crash actually happened at six-thirty in the morning. Any questions on any of those? I mean, I don't ever want you guys to get questions about stuff, um, especially in your municipality. Thank heavens none of these are in the city of, um, and not at least have some perspective. So if you ever do, just call me. I'll gladly talk to anybody you need me to talk to about things. Okay? Mark and several of us are involved. Um, Eric is aware. Uh, we did submit a letter to the Department of, uh, Department of Revenue, D O R, asking for absolute written confirmation of the fact that debt service related to fire stations is absolutely unequivocably exempted from your levy limit calculation. Um, I, it, there's no secret behind this. Every one of our municipalities would be close to bankrupt if that was not the case. And the legislation is very clear, but every once in a while, hopefully I'm not offending anybody in the audience, sometimes regulatory agencies read things slightly different than maybe the general public. So we're actually asking D O R, literally on all of your behalf, to confirm for us that our interpretation of that statute is exactly what it says. Appreciate Mark's work on that. Um, it's an interesting one. Um, kind of the tip of the waves. Um, little downer in terms of, you know, some of the events, and appreciate you taking the time to let me make sure that we get that out there. I did also, there's an attachment, because this time of the year, the question is always, you know, what's the fire district going to do to us? Um, we know that the net new construction, which for those of you who know how finances work, um, or Kelsey can give you a, a, a class on it later, um, for the district is one point nine-one percent. So that's at least one of the numbers that we start with. What we don't know yet is what the Wisconsin D O R certified C P I number is. Um, and that's actually pretty important. Um, we know what the Midwest C P I number is, but Wisconsin doesn't use that. They developed their own, um, and they have not released that to us yet. The Midwestern C P I numbers, uh, roughly, it's a little under four percent. Um, and I don't know if you, I, you know, that was a half a month ago. Um, so C P I plus two would equate to six percent. Uh, we just need the Wisconsin, the D O R number before we do any calculations, because you've just got to have it to know where you're starting from. In turn, the other thing that's very, very important to you, um, because of, you know, your growth and and everything, um, the way our budget is distributed to all of our municipalities is based on your percentage of the equalized value of the overall area. So on any given year, if your equalized value kind of exceeds the average, you pick up a little extra funding. If you are under that average, you give some up. Um, so that's always a very interesting question for municipalities. And Milton, I don't know how you pulled it off. I think it had something to do with Ted, but I won't go into that mess. Um, the district average was six-point-seven percent for the year, and you're at six-point-six-nine, or six-point-six-three, right? So literally, the good news is you're about as flat as any of the municipalities, so you're not going to pick up a big chunk, um, next year. All I got.
Good news. Thank you.
Again, thank you for the courtesy. Appreciate it.
Agenda item number five, approval of the consent agenda.
So move?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Number six, discussion of possible action regarding the special event permit application received from Timber Hill Winery and Goodworks Brewing for the Doggy Derby Vine to Vine five K on October fourth, twenty-twenty-five. Any concerns on staff's part with this special event permit, Mark?
We didn't have anything. Uh, it's a repeat event.
Okay.
There was some barricade usage, but small amounts.
Okay, thank you.
No law enforcement officers were requested. And again, as Mark said, this is a repeat event.
I make a motion to approve the special event permit application for Timber Hill Winery and Goodworks Brewing for the Doggy Derby Vine to Vine five K on October fourth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Number seven, discussion of possible action regarding the special event permit application received from the School District of Milton for the Homecoming Parade on October third, twenty-twenty-five. Again, I'll ask Mark, any concerns on your part here?
Again, a repeat event. The route was altered last year for the first time. It'll be the same route as last year. Um, some barricades from us, and Brandon will have some staff, uh, participating as well.
I would move to approve the special events permit for the School District of Milton for the Homecoming Parade on October the third, twenty-twenty-five.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Then all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Number eight, discussion of possible action regarding the special event permit application received from the Milton Track and Field Parents Group for the Milton Cross Country Fund Run and fundraiser on September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five. Have to ask you again, Mark?
They did not have any, uh, requests that were needed from us. Uh, Brandon had some discussions with the organizer about the route and, uh, possible road closures, but they will be using, um, sidewalks. So, uh, it was determined that there would be no road closures needed.
Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the Milton Cross Country Fund Run and Fund Raise, sir.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yes. Um, in the, at the bottom of the application, it states, dates officers needed, uh, nine twenty-eight during event, but further up, it does not state any officers needed, no services asked of law enforcement. Is there a clarification on that?
There will be, uh, officer monitoring if there's any problems, but they will be, uh, directly involved in the run.
Any further discussion? All right, then. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Number nine, discussion of possible action on Across the Street Bar L L C application for a Class B retail license for menton malt beverage and a Class B retail license intoxicated liquor at the premise of two-twenty-nine North Janesville Street.
Across the Street Bar has applied for a Class B retail license for menton malt beverage, and so that's your beer and, um, and malt beverages, and then intoxicating liquor for two-twenty-nine North Janesville Street. The business, which is operated by Miranda and Jason McCardle, will open as a bar and grill. They will be using both buildings, and they will also be using the future use, be using the driving range in the future. Uh, background checks on all members of the L L C were satisfactory, and Jason will serve as the agent. The application does meet all statutory requirements. Um, we do have a license available for that location. And thus, while the staff does not offer a recommendation on this application, if approved, please include in the motion, um, pending any outstanding charges due to the City of Milton. On this, we did receive a public comment regarding the application. And this is from Larry, Mary, and Jessica Lane at two-sixteen North Janesville Street. We support the issuing of the above license. The persons involved are dedicated, hard-working residents of the city. They are a good fit for the community and will operate a positive business. And there were no other public comments, uh, received on this application.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, Class B, uh, liquor license and intoxicated liquor license at the premises of two-two-nine North Janesville Street, uh, pending any charges.
Any outstanding charges due to the City of Milton?
Pending any outstanding charges due to the City of Milton.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Number ten, discussion of possible action regarding the intersection traffic control at John Paul Road and Madison Avenue, State Highway fifty-nine, and ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash five-six-nine amending section seven-zero dash one-eleven concerning through streets.
This item was presented at the last meeting. The first reading of the ordinance was completed. Uh, I did reach out to the state LA last week. We have not received a response as far as our permit application for the all-way stop control. So at this time, if council, or if council would like, they could read the second reading of the ordinance into into tonight, and then, um, we would hope to have a response back from the state. We will need a response back before we can complete the third reading.
Thank you.
So other than just waiting for a response, there's been no other changes. That's just it. So we're just looking at approval of the second reading and we'll see what happens for the third, correct? All right. Then I would move to approve the second reading of ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash five-sixty-nine amending section seventy-dash-one-one-one concerning through street designation.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on the side? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Number eleven, discussion of possible action on an offer to purchase tax parcel six thirteen two-sixty-nine in the Business Park.
This is an offer to purchase approximately eighty acres in the Business Park. As the city negotiated an option to purchase the tax purple, tax parcel six thirteen two-sixty-nine in twenty-twenty-two. The option has been continued for now, for, until now, for five thousand per year. The city has seen continued development in the Business Park and with plans to install a water tower on this parcel, exercising this option to purchase is appropriate. The offer to purchase has the city closing on the property by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. Tax incremental financing funds will be used to purchase the property, and no general tax levy will be spent. Uh, the negotiated price for the parcel is thirty-five thousand per acre. Current tax records indicate that the parcel is, uh, approximately seventy-nine point four-six acres. However, the final price will be determined after the city conducts a survey of the property. The city will also pay a six percent commission to the realtor who negotiated the option and the offer. Final pricing is expected to be around, uh, two million nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand. Uh, the city will recoup these expenses with future development. In the interim, Ted number nine will be making payments. Uh, staff will present a request for a proposal for a loan for this parcel at a future meeting. City administration recommends to approve the offer to purchase for parcel six dash thirteen dash two-sixty-nine.
Does anyone have any questions for Paul on this?
On the, uh, offer to purchase, um, it states that we've made five thousand dollar payments. So we've made three of those, correct? So that, um, two million nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, is that the price, including that fifteen thousand that will be deducted from the price, or not?
I do not believe the fifteen thousand will be deducted from the price. I think that's just to maintain that offer over the timeframe.
Can we review that? Just?
Yes, absolutely. I think our attorney's looking through it right now.
Page eleven.
Yeah, line six fifty-seven is what you're looking at. Yeah, and and and, uh, the city did a good job of including that the option payments will be applied toward the purchase price.
I stand corrected.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah. Catch, Molly.
I make a motion to approve the, uh, offer to purchase for tax parcel six dash thirteen dash two-sixty-nine in the Business Park.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Number twelve, discussion of possible action on an agreement with Catalyst for City Assessment Services.
The City of Milton has been presented with an agreement for assessment services with Catalyst Assessment Services. The council has asked to review the terms and consider action. At the August nineteenth meeting, the Common Council selected Catalyst's proposal for assessment services. This agreement will cover the years twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty, during which Catalyst will conduct a market update reevaluation annually. The cost is thirty-nine thousand three hundred annually for each of the five years to complete the work. Uh, fiscal impact, the cost of the agreement is thirty-nine thousand three hundred annually for the next five years. Recommended motion, city administration recommends approval of the agreement with Catalyst for City Assessment Services.
Any discussion or a motion?
I move to approve the agreement with Catalyst for City Assessment Services.
A second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? See, none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Number thirteen, discussion of possible action regarding change order number one for the Shumway Pond Improvements Project.
The proposed change order is to change the completion date of the project, excuse me, uh, due to, uh, wet weather conditions as requested by the contractor. The change order is to adjust the substantial completion date and final completion date from what was originally included in the bid. The new, uh, substantial completion date is August twenty-eighth, which is past, and the final completion date is September twenty-eighth. No fiscal impact for this change order. Uh, city administration No fiscal impact for this change order. Uh city administration recommends approving change order number one for the Shumway Pond Improvements.
Thank you, Mark.
I'll make a motion to approve change order one for the Shumway Pond Improvements Project.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Number fourteen, discussion and possible action regarding change order number three for the Wellhouse Improvements Project.
This change order is to perform additional skater work required at well number five. Replace an exhaust fan that was found inoperable at well number four that was originally intended to be left in place. Install a thermostat in the pump room of well number five and a credit for um not needing to complete the asbestos abatement work at well number four. The proposed change order results in a decrease in the total contract value of just over a thousand dollars. City administration recommends approving change order number three for the Wellhouse Improvements.
So it's costing us less?
Sweet.
I'll recommend approving change order number three for the Wellhouse Improvements.
I second.
Thank you for doing that quickly. We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Number fifteen, discussion and possible action regarding a work order from Baxter and Woodman Incorporated for Design Engineering Services for four-inch water main replacement project.
The attached work order is to perform design engineering services and prepare and submit a safe drinking water loan program funding application for the water main components of the project. The project includes sanitary sewer, storm sewer, street improvements and water main replacement along Babcock Street, College Street, Columbus Street, Dunn Street, Greenman Street and Larch Lane. The project improves the water system by replacing aging and undersized water mains as well as replacing lead service lines. Project design is anticipated to begin this fall. If grant funding is obtained, the construction year would be moved from the current CIP schedule of twenty twenty-eight to twenty twenty-seven. Fees for services are similar to other contracts we have had with Baxter and Woodman and based on standard hourly billing rates for actual work time performed. Plus reimbursement for out-of-pocket expenses and will be funded by the accounts related to the work performed. The total not to exceed fee for the project is one hundred and ninety-eight thousand two hundred dollars. And the project will be partially funded by safe drinking water loan program funds as well if the funding application is successful. City administration recommends approving the work order prepared by Baxter and Woodman for the East Side Water Main Replacement Project.
Thank you, Mark.
Mark, can you just explain to everybody what some of the benefits are about going up to that four-inch uh diameter as opposed to where we're at now?
Uh the four-inch mains are have been listed in our DNR sanitary surveys, which are completed every three years, I believe. For the last several surveys as a an item that we need to address. The minimum requirement now by DNR code is six inches. Uh it does provide for additional fire flow um and and just uh improved you know redundancy in the water system by having mains of appropriate size that if there is a break or a valve off or something like that, that there's uh adequate capacity throughout your network of water mains to uh convey water to different areas uh in the system. The lead service line component, obviously, we've talked about that in the past. Uh that's something that's a goal uh of the council and and the water utility and has been included uh where appropriate and previous and and future projects as well.
Thank you.
Mark, I have a question about the uh uh safe drinking water loan program. That's a loan and not a grant. Is that what I'm understanding? Low interest loan?
It is a low interest loan. There is a grant component part of it that may that we may be eligible. We'll find that out through the application process. And that would mostly apply to the lead service land replacement costs of the project.
Thanks.
I'd make a motion uh to approve the Baxter and Woodman for designing engineer services for the four-inch water main replacement project.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, one one quick question. Um you said that the grant would be applied to the the lead portion of it. Do you have like an estimation of what that is in the total project value?
Um I can get that to you. I don't have that right in front of me this evening. Um like if you're interested, I could go and share that with you.
Going off of that, um.
I would start with the assumption that we would not be receiving a grant program. Um unfortunately, that grant program is is uh focused more on uh uh less uh less uh less communities than Milton is. Uh morally mostly a a little more financially challenged communities throughout the state. So I would go under the assumption that we will not be receiving that grant. However, we will be rece- uh being eligible for subsidized loans.
Alright, thank you.
I'll ask it anyways. Um assuming we may not get the grant however, but um that grant, would that cover service lines? Like the owners would have to apply or would that be the water mains? Do you know?
The grant component would be for the lead service lines, I believe, is how this current safe drinking water loan program bill is written.
Any other discussion? Right then. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Number sixteen, discussion and possible action regarding twenty twenty-six joint powers agreement with Rock County.
This agreement is a yearly regu- agreement required by Wisconsin State statute. Outlaws uh outlines responsibilities of Rock County and their nine-one-one system and the city police.
I make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-six joint powers agreement with Rock County.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Number seventeen, discussion and possible action regarding modifications to the special event permit application. So we've had, I've had more than one of you suggest changes to our current special event um applications in the process to which we we go about it. We can start throwing out ideas right now and 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 work through those details. Or my suggestion would be for someone to make a motion that we form an ad hoc committee in which I would take. Uh you can send me an email if you're interested in being on committee. Looking for three members that in that meeting would be held here at City Hall with staff present to take notes and be open to the public. Should we have more than three, then I'll draw names from a hat from that pool. Uh so but ultimately, it's it's council's decision to move with an ad hoc committee that can work independently uh at a different date and time to be determined or to start working through them now.
I would move that we formed the ad hoc committee to meet at a later date.
I second.
Alright, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion or thoughts from anyone?
Why three?
Cause I thought three was a good number.
Three is a more traditional number because it's not the whole commi- it's not the otherwise, it's just the whole common council meeting.
Then it would be everyone.
And and but it's an odd number, so you're not gonna get to a gridlock.
I almost said because Jenny said.
Yeah, because Jenny said too. And she's always right. Eric, are you able to elaborate at all on um what what sort of things have been brought up at this time or would you just wait for the ad hoc committee?
I have no qualms about uh one uh is uh have not having all of these special event uh permit applications come to council and giving staff some latitude for we set some requirement on it. Let's say it doesn't require any police. Uh I'm making this up. This wasn't a suggestion, but certain things that they can that they can approve without having to bring them bring them to council. That was one. Uh another would be uh limiting the number of events that one single organization could have in a in a consecutive in consecutive days or in a period of time. I think that was another one. I could keep going, but that's sort of the flavor of of what we're what we're talking. And and we had an ad hoc committee the first time and that's how we came up with what we have today and I I I think that it worked well. Just because we form uh this committee to to put that together doesn't mean the council can't still pick through every part of that to come up with and ultimately make that decision. So they're not making decision for all of us, just doing some of the legwork um open to send messages to those members beforehand, so.
I'll volunteer to be on the committee.
Might wanna, I will might wanna have a committee first.
Did somebody make a motion to approve?
Love your eagerness. No, yes.
Second.
We have a motion. And a second. And then I said, is there any discussion? And we really hit it. So any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor of forming the ad hoc committee say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Derek. I did take note of that. If anybody else also wants to throw their name in the hat right now, you can or you can email me. Okay, got it. As will I. Okay, that's good. Paul, you in? Just kidding, no. Okay, we're gonna draw names. Alright, so. Thank you. Uh eighteen, general items. Uh we'll start with committee reports.
Well, we had the plan commission meeting tonight. Uh just basically biggest thing was reviewing the comprehensive plan. I thought they were gonna do that tonight, but no. Uh they just went over the review. I for a lot of you that were at like community days, you saw them out there with their tent and people were able to come up and give their input. Uh they went over the survey. Uh the biggest obvious things uh that just popped out in the city is uh high cost of housing is, you know, and housing concerns and equitable housing concerns, traffic management, those were those big ticket items. Uh and there was really no surprises, in my opinion. If you've ever looked at Milton and you've listened to anything about Milton. I thought that what they put out was very representative of what we hear all the time uh within the community. Uh the good and the bad. Uh it all of it was was pretty, you know, like, hey, people love our schools. People love our library. They love the things that we do within our community. We have a very active community with different events that people like to do. People would like to see more of that. Uh it was surprising that uh some of the responses were was the best way to put I, there were there were some that get contradictory. Uh like, you know, we we want more housing, but we don't want any more growth. And things like that, that's gonna happen with these types of surveys because, you know, there's there's always some conflict. But overall, and I would recommend everyone to get out to your friends, to become involved with these and get to the plan commission meetings, to take the surveys. To let get ahold of the council members and the plan commission members to have your input because it does matter. Uh people are listening. Uh they're going to have some more focus groups, I believe they said they had planned in the future. I attend those. It shouldn't just be our voices or the plan commission's voice in this. Uh because we're just gonna respond to what the community wants. So I would recommend get it out to your friends and get people to to those meetings to have your voice heard because this group doesn't care what we think uh or what the plan commission thinks. They only they really care about what the community thinks and who are the stakeholders. And they're trying to reach out as best they can, so.
I have to say, I thought they did an amazing job at Community Days. It was so fun and interactive and there were so many people at their booth too. So I think the community really embraced that interaction.
And I was surprised they for the uh online survey, they had more than I would thought, people that didn't live in Milton that took the survey. There were about twenty uh that that took it that don't live in Milton, but you know, at least they they care enough about Milton that they wanted to have an input, so. Uh I I thought it was pretty cool. I don't know that I've ever taken a survey for another city.
Thank you, Ken.
Um I'll go next. Parks met yesterday evening. Uh we had our kickoff meeting with Angus Young. Uh who's going to be providing three schematic designs for the Milton Community House. Um kinda three different ideas of just updating it, uh what it may look like with a further updates and some renovation. Um and then potential total new uh structure there. Um based on those three designs, there we will provide one rendering of the design chosen and then we will go from there as a park commission and a common council. Um so what we did yesterday is we discussed the use and the wants that uh we all had for the community house and they will take it from there.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else?
The library met last night at the board. Um but ours was really about budgets. Um and talking more about online e-reading and more. Um we had, Ashley's not here, so we had um we made more in the art walk uh by over two thousand dollars for the fundraising. Um from last year, which was amazing. It was an amazing evening. Um and then we had a record-breaking summer number of visits to the library. It was like I wanna say it was like a hundred and twenty thousand people that had gotten and they had done over a hundred fifty-one programs this just in the summer. It was amazing. Record highs.
Yes, the art walk, that that was great. The auction was awesome. One can really get caught up in the bidding. If you're going, yeah. So hard to hard to stop, but. Okay, anybody else? Committee reports? I think that we got it covered. So uh staff reports.
Um the first lane water main installation is nearly complete. That should be wrapped up this week. The contractor performed milling on Vernal Bu- Buton and Morgan Street uh yesterday and today. They'll be doing some storm water in or some storm sewer installation on Vernal as well as sidewalk and curb and gutter replacement on all of those segments over the next few weeks. Vincent Street was repaved um two weeks ago, I believe. We have all seen Shumway Pond is getting closer. Uh but yeah, just kinda those are the big projects that we're working on, so. Oh, and the Arthur Drive Utility Project will start this week as well. That's down um by American Works.
Thank you. Kelsey.
Um our twenty twenty-six budget process is well underway. Paul and I have met with all of leadership for their requests for twenty twenty-six. So I'm just working through and updating my spreadsheet. Um we have new numbers coming in every day, so just keeping up. Getting everything entered at the next meeting. You'll have a draft overview of where the budget sits along with a um looking at the nonprofits uh contribution requests at the next meeting. And then we are also implementing a new payment portal for citizens to use. It is live, but under construction still lives up tonight, so I'm hoping it'll be live, live and working well tomorrow because it's advertised on the utility bills that went out yesterday. So we have my fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Um as Kelsey said, we've been working on the budget. That's been going well so far. Um continuing to work with developers, looking for that residential growth to try and reduce the housing costs here in the community. And uh good presentation from the comp plan, uh just a couple of numbers with that. Uh she said they had about eighty families stop by during community days at their booths and they were really uh really impressed with Milton. Um and then a hundred and seventy-nine responses to the survey. So if you did uh respond to the survey, thank you.
Thank you, Kenny.
So for my department, I don't have much of an update, but I did wanna bring to your attention a little bit about our social media recently. Um so I just wanted to say um uh a big thank you to our front staff uh with some of these um social media posts that have been kind of more in discussions, a little bit more uh of just basic things. Um we, our front staff has actually gone back and forth of of Mark's been sending some information, other departments have been sending information and then um it's really great because they're bouncing off ideas of what the public um is going to uh really relate to and add uh more information where maybe we're missing it, so. Um again, I think that's just something to bring up. I really wanted to bring up is that it's really amazing to see the coordination with staff and and the public, so.
I'm glad you brought that up. I was like gonna ask off camera like who's been doing that. Their voice is great. It's very um relatable.
And that would be Ashley and Kaylee who are in our uh front office, so they are the smiling faces you see when you walk into City Hall.
Thank you. Okay, so then our team building exercise. What is something you are unbeatable at?
Making a great cup of coffee.
Did cue your mic, Molly.
I jokingly said life, but that was a joke and thankfully Derek found it funny.
I give myself a mean haircut. I do this, by the way. Yeah, I don't pay anybody for it. Thank you, thank you. Yeah, we think I'd pay somebody for that? No. Haven't paid for a haircut in years.
Board games versus my kids.
Way to keep it real, yeah. And he's not talking chutes and ladders. No, they gotta play cribbage.
Falling asleep. Fall asleep like on command. Pretty proud of that.
Mark, mine's kind of similar to yours. I was gonna say Mario Kart against my kids. Not happening.
I can beat Mark's kids too. Arm wrestling with them.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna say decorating for birthdays and special events.
I'll, I'll just say smoking brisket because beating Mark's kids was already taken.
It's rather, rather violent, so I would say maybe say defeating would be.
And there's the attorney in the room, because in case you didn't know, that's the attorney in the room. So are you good at defeating his kids too?
No, they probably beat, beat me. Both ways.
Did we get everybody up here or did we land on Derek?
Come on.
Just say math.
I guess in my household, like, perfecting the perfect morning routine. I was going to a conference last week, and it's like the world falls apart and the morning's getting ready for school. So even with everything laid out, so we'll go with that.
I'm stuck between three. I'll just say them.
There's absolutely zero hubris there.
So just the different layers of my brain is, I'm particularly good at organizing things. That's the first thing that came to my mind, but then on the game side, Mortal Kombat two with the Sega Genesis, game on, bring it, like, undefeatable. But on a more relevant time, as I love billiards and I would like to think that I'm above average in billiards.
Ryan, you, you got one?
He said risk.
Sorry, you did. Okay, audience, you can just yell it out. Please limit it to one. And I guess I, I forgot you, counselor. Or was that yours earlier? Mark's kids.
I was thinking, it's probably to borrow a line from Churchill of always making the right decision, but only after all of other options have been exhausted.
Anybody else? Is that it?
Me, oh, I must have run me. I'm here for the project and back in my house, over here on Prairie Circle. Construction of that, whatever they're doing back there.
Oh, sure.
Apparently there was supposed to be a meeting tonight of my neighbors and all that. I don't see my neighbors here, but.
Not aware of any, any, no, no, sir, it's not on the agenda tonight.
Can I practice?
Since it's not on the agenda, I have to kindly ask you not to, no. So, but thank you for sitting through the entire meeting.
I was getting a punchline, so I was hoping you could say hello, but I'm not here. Yeah, I believe I talked with Paul a little bit.
Okay.
I don't know, maybe whoever at the front desk before, they said there was a meeting, but they never said about it. And then I had Chad, which is below me on the hill. See, if anybody's familiar with that.
Sir, since it's not on the agenda, I'm sorry, we can't, we can't discuss it. So after the meeting, we'll come, I'll come see you and we'll look and see when that next meeting might be, so we can talk about it. Sorry, since it's not an agenda item, we can't discuss, so. So then with that, our next meeting date is October seventh, and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Got it, sorry.
Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.